Now it's recording.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, let me do, let's do roll call first, I apologize. Roll call please, Jeff.
Mr. Delge?
Here.
Mr. Olson?
Here.
Ms. Owen?
Here.
Ms. Parks?
Here.
Mayor for that meeting.
Present. Okay, um, at this time, there was a motion that was made, seconded by Mrs. Owen. Open the meeting to the public, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any votes? For the public? Is there anyone, Randy, that has, uh, their hand raised?
Uh, let's see here, I do not see anyone, not women, mister, okay, mistress.
Mr. Gosson, go ahead, I see your hand.
My name is Larry Gosson, I move on Fifth Avenue. Mayor, are you in the meeting?
I am here.
I can't see you, Mayor.
I don't know what happened on the screen, it was there moments ago.
It's pointing up to the ceiling, I think.
Or it's pointing down, one of the other.
Anyway, the purpose for my taking some of your time is, is I would like to talk about the, uh, engineer's report, I see that there's, uh, an engineer's report on the agenda, and I would be concerned that he wouldn't be covering the Fifth Avenue project, um, I have a particular interest in that, it's well over seven, well, 750 feet of Fifth Avenue, is my frontage. I'd like to know what's going on, particularly with the drainage, I understand there's gonna be asphalt laid.
I'm pretty sure that we're
You know what's happening, and how do we go about finding out what's happening, is the engineer gonna be addressing that this evening?
The engineer is with us tonight, I'm sure that he's probably gonna have some time to address our case, too, while, how we are proceeding with that project, um, so, I don't have, I'm not gonna speak for the engineer, because he is a licensed professional and I am not, and none of us are, so I'd prefer, just defer that question when the engineer comes on, okay?
Thank you, why I have, why I have an opportunity to ask questions of the engineer at that point?
That's not open to the public, it's not open for the public, well, why don't you just ask the question now, and then he'll hear it, and then he'll respond to it. But did you already ask the question?
Well, I guess my first question is, is why he hasn't maybe reached out to me and told me anything about what's going on, a small community like our own, uh, maybe somebody could've just said, hey, Mr. Gosson, we're gonna build a big project in front of your house, and it may have some impact on you, and wanna keep your concerns and, and keep you posted, maybe that would be my first question, I, I mean, I don't know what questions I have until I guess I learn more about what's going on, I know nothing other than rumor, and I've seen some marks placed, the people that I've questioned along the road have said nothing, told me that, I don't think, I don't think
We are gonna be, we're asphalting the road from where the, uh, asphalt ends, by your property, and it's gonna pick up about a thousand feet or so, from point A to point B, where the other asphalt, uh, takes it down to the end of Fifth, so, in between that little home stretch there, there will be new asphalt that will be there, and we are still working, waiting on the fine land's, uh, approval of the drainage pond, so, would that be
I don't know what that means, drainage pond, that, what is that?
For the, for the water drains, for the water drains.
Okay, are there pictures of what that's gonna look like, is there pipes that are gonna get laid, is there, uh, heavy equipment that's gonna get parked in front of my house, is there, I mean, what does that mean, Mr. Benese, you said a lot of nothing so far, you haven't told me what any of this means. So, and I don't know what questions you asked me to ask a question.
I'm trying to be helpful to you, and you're badgering me, so
I'm not.
You can find any more, you have your five minutes that you've, uh,
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I look forward to hear.
Anyone else in the public?
No.
Thank you, um, first in response, first a thought for the rest of council, uh, with Mr. Gosson's question, um, obviously, council does have the right to open the meeting, uh, to specific members of the public at any time, um, for specific reasons, to allow Mr. Gosson to ask whatever questions he may have after, uh, Mr. Fralinger's explained what the current status is, and, um, they may give clarification on city money versus grant versus et cetera, um, that may just be a way to help handle that, doesn't have to reopen the whole meeting to everybody, but to allow Mr. Gosson to ask a couple of questions may be useful, uh, I haven't, obviously, with the new agenda, I haven't seen what that is yet, and I'm trying to boot up on Zoom on my desktop, um, but just to say that if, uh, things about alcohol and drug testing, um, is still on the agenda, um, I'm happy to answer any questions that, uh, members may have, um, if that is something that is helpful, be happy to do that, um,
I'm gonna give you an unlimited amount of time to, uh, take as long as that you would like, to explain the benefits of what that's gonna do for the community, by you, uh, implementing, uh, your alcohol and drug testing for an occasional employee in the event that you ever have to hire another one, so I'm gonna give you an unlimited amount of time, there will be no time limit for you, Mr. Gosson.
You mean at the time where we're gonna, where you're talking about, or you want me to do that?
Because I'm gonna turn, I'm gonna bring you into the meeting,
Okay.
And I'm gonna give you the floor, and I'm gonna give you an unlimited amount of time to be able to speak, convince us all why it's very, very important that we should do this, do you have anything else that you'd like to say?
Uh, I do, I'll correct that misapprehension, that this was something that I jumped into, but we'll, we'll get to that later, um, the other, uh, is regarding the planning board, Secretary Peace, um, my understanding, it, the vibes I get from Mr. Moore, and perhaps I am mistaken on that, is that, um, that's not something he's been enthusiastic about, as well as messing with the whole Zoom piece, um, I do have access to a Zoom account, um, and, uh, if that is something that's gonna be an open position, um, I'd be happy to, see if that is something where my gifts and graces may be helpful, uh, to the city, um, at a reasonable, uh, remuneration, since I'm probably gonna have to start paying for that Zoom account fairly soon, uh, I'm unsure about the whole personnel piece, that's listed at the, it was anyway, listed at the end of the meeting, um, whether that's still gonna be on the saga for the clerk position, or something else, um, if it is about the clerk, I would just ask that folks give strong consideration, um, to not creating a potentially awkward situation of going to a full-time position, um, after the previous occupant left, because she was being told that the position was no longer going to be full-time, um, that may have other consequences, um, with a word that begins with L, um, at some future point, at this I, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I missed that.
I'm talking under my breath, do you have anything else that you wanna say?
Uh, no, I, I think that'll do it for now, thank you.
Anyone else in the public that has anything else to say?
I don't see anyone else.
Make a motion to close the, uh, public portion?
Wait a minute, I have something to say in the public.
The meeting is, uh, Mr. Delge, you're not a member of the public, you're a member of the
No, I have something to say to the public with reference to the agenda, and I do have entirely appropriate for me to speak, as the solicitor has reminded us so many times.
I don't recall that the solicitor has reminded us of that.
You wanna remind him again, Mr. Solicitor?
The mayor and council are all members of the public, and they have a right to speak in the public session. Thank you.
Uh, as a point of clarity, and, and just in, in the effort to be helpful to all concerned regarding the meeting, I've been told, it's been suggested to me by several people, that tonight's meeting may go on for a very long time, I advise that it's the consensus of council that we will finish tonight by 10 o'clock for three principal reasons, one is, after 10 o'clock, we tend to get tired, our judgment becomes impaired, and we tend to say yes to things we would not ordinarily say yes to, just to have it over with and go home, secondly, because, uh, the majority of us have things to do early in the morning tomorrow, and thirdly, because, we will meet again this month for a special meeting, in consideration of the response to the RFP for professionals, and whatever meeting is left undone tonight, and whatever excuse of their business left undone tonight, can be addressed at that meeting, so, uh, it is the consensus of council that we will wrap up by 10 o'clock.
Any other members of the public who have anything else to say? Hearing none, make a motion to close the public?
Second.
You second it?
I don't know.
You second it?
The old age.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any votes? I, uh, have, next on the item here, I wanted to have a discussion on purchasing of a dump truck, um, I did in fact, um, talk to our public works people, and we have a vehicle that is obviously, it is not capable of doing anything other than some minor errands around town, um, it's looking at, completely shot out underneath, it's so rotted, it's not gonna get any better, it's just only getting worse, I am aware that the, um, 2010 vehicle that we have, um, aside from the fact that it's not really what you call high mileage, it's very unmaintained mileage that's on that vehicle, um, there has been, maintenance has been done to it this year, thank God, but I am aware that, uh, the last time that that vehicle was out plowing snow, that the transmission was continuously overheating, and still was continuing to do that from the last time we had a snowstorm, I have asked to have information, which is why I wanted to have a special meeting to discuss getting a truck, I don't have any information in front of me, I, uh, requested to have information to look at some vehicles, so the council could discuss it, I believe that it's a public safety issue in our community that one of us must absolutely address, I could also tell you that we could do a lease purchase, if we were to get a truck for somewheres around $60,000 a year, we could finance that over a five-year period, at $12,000 a year, and I think that we could definitely and affordably be able to massage that into our budget, there would be no tax increase, it is incumbent upon all five members of council that we have to address the public safety of the community, that is our single biggest task that we must accomplish, if we cannot maintain the public safety of our community, and part of that is being able to have accessible streets, we need to have the, uh, fire trucks to be able to respond, in the event that there's a, uh, situation that occurs, we have to be able to allow an ambulance to be able to get through, if they have to stop to pick up, uh, uh, unfortunately for a resident, and right now, I'm just really not sure that we have a vehicle that's going to be able to sustain, in the event that we have a wet and heavy snowstorm, we have known for the last couple of years that that vehicle that we have isn't sore need, I could also tell you that we are, uh, discussing tonight selling some equipment, that should be able to take care of, uh, a year's payment, when we would receive the money, uh, I know that we have monies that are in our, uh, capital account, I know that we have saved a considerable amount of money in public works, and if council is aware of what we were spending in the past, we could very, very simply achieve our goal of being able to have a, uh, vehicle, um, I know that last year that there was a vehicle that was available, we dropped our feet, it was gone, we could've gotten a 550, an F-550 Ford, with a stainless steel body, or, excuse me, a stainless steel bed, and Judge, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that vehicle's for $65,000, it was already put together with a plow, with a plow, we dropped our feet, and the vehicle's no longer available, it could've been delivered to us immediately, I am hopeful that there could in fact be a vehicle that's out there, so that we can entertain the idea of, uh, getting it something, it would not be who this council to buy something, uh, by ordering it, we would never have it delivered to us until sometime around mid-May to June, that would be insane, if there's a vehicle that's available now, it would be in the city's best interest to go out and get it, we would sell not only the, uh, military truck, we have some other plus items that we're gonna sell, and then we could also in fact, um, sell the dump truck, the, uh, 2001, each year that we wait, the price of vehicles is going up, and the residual value of any vehicle that we have is going down, it makes no sense to continue to drag our feet.
Is, is there a motion on the table for us to be talking about this?
Uh, excuse me, Mrs. Owen, but it's on the agenda for tonight, do you have that on your agenda?
Yes.
Okay, well that's
But you're talking, like, you're, you're discussing things that we don't have financed, financial information on, how can we discuss something when we don't have anything in front of us, that gives us black and white details of what we're deciding on and what we're looking into?
I'm gonna ask Mr. Moore that question, or better yet, reflect that to Mr. Moore, because I have in fact asked several times, I need to have information, I understand, I see rough, uh, a few feet away from me that there's a truck finders magazine that's out there, I'm not exactly sure if that's a golden bible as to the vehicles that are available that are in fact out there, maybe we're gonna get lucky, I don't know, Mr. Moore, have you
I, I do remember, I do remember last year, last November actually, October, that this same issue came up, and you took on the responsibility to get to those quotes, and they have not been, they have not surfaced since.
Uh, I took on that responsibility, and I had a particular truck, and it wasn't in October, it was in November, and I sold that vehicle to the League of Municipalities, I brought that information back to the council, and council decided to do nothing, I didn't go to the league this year, and I did not attend it whatsoever, not even by virtual, and the reality is, I don't have any information, I was really hopeful that that information would in fact have been supplied to us, so, I'm glad that you said that information means, uh, we're having a discussion on which information is not being supplied to us, I'm glad that you did mention that, Judge, do you have any information on any vehicles that are out there, from some of these, uh, dealerships that service, uh, not service, but, uh, sell to municipalities?
I looked in this, uh, magazine that has a number of truck dealers in, in, in this area, the lowest one is $53,990, but it does not have a snowplow, and a snowplow
Uh, others are higher, there's one in here for, um,
Is it a 550 or a 450?
Uh, this one here is for $64,995, it's a 2019 450, this one here is a 2019 450, I believe there's a couple on here that I marked that was a 550, but that's the price range of what we're gonna see, because that's what you found out last year, Mayor, between 53,900, around that price, and, um, 65,000, I got something here on state contracts here, you know, to help you out, and from another town that I had, was involved with, with the specifications, and that was $54,233 with all the options required on a truck, for 450 with a snowplow, so, that's the information that the mayor gave me as far as a price range, uh, but let me add this, right now in our audit, there's approximately 29,000, I don't know if it's exact 29,000, it may be, that, that we have, that we have money that we have put away over the last several years for public works equipment, in the 2020 budget, we added another 5,000, so now we're up to approximately $35,000 that we actually have money in, in, in our budget, uh, if we sell the, the two vehicles that we're hoping to sell, which we're gonna discuss tonight, I'm hoping that something with around 20,000 would, would come in with that, but when we do our 2021 budget with the finance committee, we can put additional money in that capital line item for public works equipment to move forward with this purchase, the mayor has talked about a lease, that is possible?
Lease purchase.
A lease purchase, if we wanted to do that, that'd be monthly payments, you'd have interest involved with that, I do not know the exact details, because, uh, I don't know if towns, most of the towns I'm affiliated with don't do that, but that is an option. The mayor today has been about a Ford 550, there's one in this book, no snowplow, it's got, uh, nine-foot Mason dump, it's a diesel, and, uh, it's got various options, and that one is for $64,490, it's got a steel body and no plow.
Steel or stainless steel?
Steel.
Okay, so a couple things, one, we're spending somewheres around $8,000 more by getting a diesel, and I've spoken to, uh, Mr. Cornu, and he has indicated that we don't have to have a diesel.
That is correct.
We would be better off if we just simply had a, uh, gas truck,
Yes.
Which I, I think would be a, uh, a smarter investment for the town, we don't need to have that diesel, um, but we certainly do in fact need to have a new truck, if in fact there's something that's available, for council's own notification, there are two vehicles that we could get, one would be a 450, and the other one would be a F-550, the difference of the two is the 550 can hold more weight in the bed, but it has the same engine, same everything, it just has heavier duty springs than a 550, uh, and a heavier load option to be able to haul more weight with, other than that, it does the same amount of work, I'm thinking that, you know, if we have, uh, s- uh, salt in the back of that truck, it probably would be a, an added benefit to have that 550, um, I just see that it would be a, a better choice to have, but if we did get a 450, I'm not gonna be totally upset about it, I just think that for our money, we would be better, uh, we would be better off to have that, you know, bigger vehicles to hold more weight, I don't know what other members of council feel, but that is my feeling on it, I think that that would be the smart way to go. Does anyone have any, uh, discussions on that? Isn't that discussion, okay, so, Judge, we have a vehicle there, it's a, uh, 550, it's a diesel.
This shows in this latest vaccine, I mean, you know, it's like anything else, somebody could've already purchased it already, but before we do anything, I think you need to vote on, on whether or not we're going to purchase a truck at this time.
I will make a necessary motion that the city, uh, proceed to move forward to have all options in front of us for our next council meeting, maybe we should have another one again, yeah, instead of that way there, we'll, it just be specifically for the discussion of having a, uh, purchase of a truck.
But I just, I'm, I'm very, very concerned that what we have right now, it's not gonna serve the residents' needs, and with that being said, I think that opens up the city for a major catastrophic lawsuit, if something was to happen where a fire occurs, and God forbid, somebody got seriously hurt, or even worse, and the same thing goes for, uh, emergency call, for an ambulance, because we, uh, we are putting it down the road, and next thing we know, the person wasn't able to get help in due time, I think it becomes a major catastrophic lawsuit for the city.
Mayor, could you clarify your motion?
I make a motion that we continue to move forward to have, uh, vehicles to choose from, and be in a position to vote the night of the, uh, uh, presentation of the vehicles that we have.
So you're just making a motion that we continue to discuss this?
I'm making a motion that we explore all of the available options that are out there, options as in what vehicles that are, uh, readily available to purchase, Judge, didn't you tell me there was something, that there was a vehicle, a Gentileini, that was available, 450?
There was, yes, they have
You said they had a couple of them, are they still available?
I don't know, I will know Friday, I'm gonna have my oil change down there, I can check into it.
What was the price of the vehicle, what did you call?
Uh, they were approximately these same prices, because they're not on state contract.
So, Mr. Solicitor, with the fact that the vehicle is not under state contract, I mean, in, in a sense, I mean, anybody whoever buys a vehicle, you just don't simply walk in there and say, hey, you know what, uh, I like that truck, I'm gonna buy it, I mean, when I bought my vehicle, any vehicle I've ever bought, I've always been able to negotiate with the dealership and work it down to less, how would we as a municipality do that?
If it's not under state contract, you need to request bids.
So if it's not under state contract, we need to request bids?
Yes, you do.
And with that being said, uh, we would have to, uh, request for the bid to indicate a vehicle that is ready to be delivered, not to be ordered, but to be, but to be delivered, correct?
You can specify whatever you choose.
I think that would be the way to choose it.
Well, I mean, that's, that's up to council's pleasure.
I'm not for sure if it's any different if you're gonna lease purchase, whether you have to go to bid on something like that or not, uh, I haven't done one in a long time, so I don't know what that law may say, you may have to bid that too.
A lease purchase?
Yeah.
Randy, anything that you could look up in a book that, uh, would indicate, while we get, get on to the next subject, and then we'll re, come back to revisit this one here to find out, what are the, uh, parameters for, uh,
Yeah, that's not an easy issue, Judge, right, um, and I'm not even so sure that dealers will do a lease purchase.
Well, how does the county do it, I mean, they, they do it every year, they buy vehicles and, uh, they're done to a lease purchase, do they put RFPs out there for a, uh, that they're interested to do a lease purchase of a vehicle, and they put the, uh, they specify the vehicle?
I can certainly talk to Mr. Ferguson and find out how they do it.
He generally, he generally see police cars done that way, but there's a motion on the floor, the mayor is asking to continue to discuss this at, in a, another meeting, or, in the future meeting?
I, I actually think that we probably, if, if council would authorize it, if we find the vehicle, uh, not to exceed a map, we could probably vote tonight, and if we see the vehicle that's gonna fit the city's best needs, at least we have the ability to be able to, uh, put the deposit on it, or something to hold the vehicle, Randy, how would that work?
You're still gonna have to request bids.
You have to put out a bid request, correct, you think the same?
It is, if it's not on state contract, you have to, you have to bid it.
I, I wanna make a motion. I make
There's already a motion.
Uh, Mr. Olson, there's already a motion, do you want a second, my motion's what you're saying?
You're saying no.
Okay.
If, if you're gonna do what you're saying, Mayor, then your motion should change to say that you wanna make a motion to authorize myself to go out to bid and to receive bids, you cannot award a bid until I can certify the funds, so after a bid is opened, you have 60 days to purchase that item, and then you have to start the process over again, so if you wanna do something tonight, that's the route, that, that's what your resolution should set.
So I'll have to, well, I'll take that resolution back, and I'm gonna make a motion that we have, um, uh, bid specifications to go out, uh, indicating that we're looking to purchase a vehicle, and we'll have to be specific about the vehicle that we're looking for, I hope the council would agree that a 550 would be the city's best needs. So my motion is, I wanna make a motion to, uh, put this out, the bid to, uh, find a vehicle for our city, is there a second?
There's no second, Mayor, the motion fails.
Okay, so I guess we don't need a truck then, right? It's easier to spend money on a lawsuit, and that's gonna give us a greater return on our value than to save somebody's life, that's fine, that's fine. Not gonna lose sleep over it. Uh, let me ask you this, does council at any point in time, uh, have an interest to wanna go out and buy a truck, or are we gonna just simply let everything stay a status quo? That's what I'd like to know.
I, I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion that we put it in the budget and do this next year, and put it out for state contract.
I'll second that.
And that way we can look at concrete things in front of us.
Okay, so between now and then, uh, Mr. Olson-